Good evening and welcome to the November 9th Kittleville Hills Board of Commissioners meeting. If you would please, we're going to call the meeting to order and if you would please rise and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And before we enter our moment of silence, I'd just like to bring to your attention and ask that you keep Officer Rodney Ross and his family in your thoughts and prayers. He's an officer with our police department and his father passed away today, so if you'll keep them in your thoughts and prayers. And with that, we'll call for a moment of silence. Thank you. Okay, first, our agenda item is the agenda approval.
Is it moved?
Second, any discussion or comments? All those in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you. We will move on then to the first time that's set aside this evening for public comment. This is an opportunity for anyone in the audience who wishes to speak to the board about any topic of their choosing, to please do so. We do ask if you are speaking this evening as an individual, if you would try to limit your comments to three minutes, and if you're speaking on behalf of a group, if you would try to limit those comments to five minutes. We do ask when you come to the podium there, if you would identify yourself by name and address, please. We have a sign up sheet. Did anyone sign up, Mary?
No.
Okay, but that's all right. We will call from the floor, is there anyone that wishes to speak at this public comment time this evening? And welcome some of our public, we have some new faces in the audience. Is there anyone that wishes to speak at this public comment time? Sorry if I'm staring at you. No takers? Okay, well, there is an opportunity again at the end of the meeting if you so choose. So, we will move on then with our first item, actually our only item under old business. And this is discussion and possible guidance on oceanfront large single-family dwellings. Just a little bit of history on this item. We had a joint workshop between the Board of Commissioners and the Planning Board a couple of months ago to kind of explore this topic. Concerns had been brought to the Board of Commissioners about some of the size and magnitude of some of the homes on our oceanfront, so we agreed to have or start discussions on this topic. At the conclusion of the joint exploratory meeting between the Planning Board and the Board of Commissioners, we agreed to send this back to the Board of Commissioners at our October meeting to see if we could come up as a board with any guidance to send to the planning staff. We did not come up with any guidance at the October 12th meeting. We recognize that this is a pretty comprehensive topic. There's lots of facets from an economic perspective, an appearance perspective, a safety perspective. So, we had agreed at the October 12th meeting to continue to put this on our agenda, allowing board members to do research and talk to citizens, talk to stakeholders, to see if there's any more guidance or if we were able to come up with guidance to provide the planning staff. So with that, I will just open the floor for discussion. Any new revelations, thoughts since the last meeting?
No, I looked at some more information about it and also it was brought up at the last meeting, I think Travis brought it up, that the rental history for these, some of these places wasn't all that great this summer. So, the shine might be wearing off of that kind of a accommodation. So, a lot of times, the market takes care of itself and that may or may not happen in this case. And we're pretty limited in what we can do, and if you, even if you talk about floor area ratio, some of the bigger ones there right now are within a reasonable floor area ratio. But when you hear about X bedrooms and 30 parking places, it's like, it kind of blows your mind, but I don't know if I'm ready to do anything, but I'm not ready to give up talking about it or researching it personally.
Yeah, I'm with Mike. I mean, I'd like to keep the agenda item going. I think the, I don't have anything new from the public forum, just because it was fairly recent, but I mean, it's, it's something that I think we're going to continue to get some, some input on, so hopefully we'll get some different input that we can, you know, potentially use it for advice on.
I've talked to some public as well and it's the same feedback and it's just like we discussed at the last meeting, it's, it depends on who you talk to as to what the feedback is you get. So, I think it's just like we discussed at the last meeting, it's, it's like Mike said, if we limit what we can limit, it's going to depend on how much area and how much land they actually have as to what can happen. And we've seen with the, with the one house, that it's possible for them to still build a 24-bedroom house and be within the floor area ratio, restraints that we're going to be able to put on them. So, we, we need to, you know, see what we can do, but at the same time, maybe we do need to look at possibly doing that to make sure that we do have somebody, have them doing what, what they did there and have the, the right, the correct parking and whatnot there. So, I don't know, but I don't have anything new.
Yeah, same for me, I don't have anything new. I mean, I also agree with you guys, it's, it's hard to fault people for playing by the rules and we did set the rules, so.
I took the opportunity to meet with a couple of different folks since October, and interestingly enough, the forum, even though it was on the forum as, as an item that we wanted to encourage input and discussion on, no one that attended the forum that night really engaged in any conversation about that topic, bless you. We had other topics certainly that we discussed, but that wasn't one, so we really, we didn't get any input at the forum. But I met with a couple of folks, they're actually involved in planning the May Mobility Month and it's for veterans and helping them gain access to some of the amenities in our wonderful area, not just the beach, but some of the other amenities that we have. And they had brought up a recommendation, which we can't do because we're not allowed to impose the, the building codes or change those standards or make it more than what the states told us. So, for example, their suggestion was more along, their concern was more along the lines of safety. You put, as they're focused on, you put a number of folks in wheelchairs in one of these many hotels, and what happens if there's a fire? How do they get out? And so, their suggestion was, could we not over a certain square footage require them to comply with building codes for commercial properties? We cannot do that, even though I liked the thought of it, we can't. However, I did also meet just recently with a couple of builders, developers, and it was one of their suggestions was, you know, could we not require residential sprinklers if a house gets over a certain size? So, we still can deal with bulk, we can't deal with bedrooms, but we still can deal with bulk. And I don't know if there's some, kind of looking at you Greg, that maybe we can explore that, is there not any way that you can require residential sprinklers?
We can change the building code for all of North Carolina.
Yeah, right.
That's the effect that you're asking.
So, when we, when we try to make any ordinance changes because of that regulation that was changed just in North Carolina a month ago, we have, that didn't have anything to do with it.
The way it's been explained to me, and I'm not a building inspector or a code official of this, I guess, the state exams, but they spent a lot of money getting the word "uniform" put on the North Carolina building code. So, if you were to change something to do with the structure, inside the structure, not zoning or anything, but something inside that structure is going to require a change for the building code for, for the entire state. They have some coastal, you know, wind zones and they have mountains, snow loads and all, but for the most part, you know, it's, it's the uniform building code and that, that's a big issue and.
Well, and like we've been able to incentivize, thinking back, with some of the changes we just looked at with floor area ratio for commercial structures, well, specifically our multifamily dwellings, we were able to put, put in a couple of concessions if they did this, that you could get to .5 and then .55. Is there not a way to build any of that in? So, if we were to decrease and say, okay, this is the size that you could build, square footage, but if you wanted to get to X size, you need to put in a residential sprinkler?
I'd be happy to.
That would be an angle, maybe?
I don't have an answer for you tonight, but I, if you had, if I had to guess, I'd say no.
And there's two different legislations that I think we're getting confused here. One was, that was just recently passed about the architectural regulations that deals with color, style, number of bedrooms, room designations. There was a legislation that was passed, I think going on two years ago, that prohibited any county or municipality to adopt regulations that exceed any state regulation. Then, building code is a state regulation, it's an ICC code that's adopted by the state, which means several years ago, we were prohibited from making our regulations that the state already regulates more prohibitive or more restrictive than the state's. So, there's two different legislations we're talking about, one's relatively new, one's brand new. So, the architectural guidelines that were recently passed have nothing to do with the fact that we can't do sprinkler systems in residential structures, because that's a building code issue and that goes back to the legislation that was a couple of years ago. Just wanted to clarify that.
No, I think it's important to clarify. I mean, I think of the, of the three facets of, of this, safety, appearance, and economics. The economics helps me keep grounded in the fact that we can't go out there and make rash decisions that are going to hurt the tax base for us. So, that's why, if anyone's thinking, you know, why I wouldn't jump in and say, well, let's go down to, you know, 5,000 square feet or something similar to what Nagseth's doing, I wouldn't necessarily support that because you have to look at the economics of what that does overall to property values, our tax base and whatnot. But of the three, safety, appearance, and economics, the one for me personally that's most concerning is the safety. And I guess that's where I feel like if we could, if we could maybe focus our efforts in exploring, do we have any, any options or is everything that we would look to do going to fall under that building code? I mean, you know, is it a thing of, for example, having to have, you know, a certain number, I'm afraid everything I'm thinking of is going to fall under building code for your exits and, and your emergency lighting and whatnot, so, but I don't know if you guys could explore that and see if there's any avenue.
So, what I'm understanding is, is there any way for a municipality to incentivize, not require, but incentivize somehow some safety improvements in a, in a structure and still be in compliance with the building code? That's what, that's what I wrote down.
Perfect. Thank you for summarizing that for everybody. Okay.
Thanks Greg.
Are we okay to see if we can come up with anything on that and still put this again under old business at the next meeting and see if we have any new information?
I'll have it for you.
Perfect. Thank you very much.
Thanks Greg.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion then tonight on this item?
And I think that's a good one to bring up, just because we've already looked at bulk and they're already well under far and we've looked at some parking and most of them are well within their parking and some of them have room for even more. So, I think that's a great avenue because that's, as some people have mentioned, a potential disaster waiting to happen, so I think that's good.
Great, thank you. Okay. Thank you Meredith and Greg as well. Then we'll move on to new business. Item number one is the 2015 Flood Plane and Storm Water Management Program for Public Information. Assistant Planning Director Meredith Guns is going to review this item with us. And we'll turn it over to you, welcome Meredith.
Thank you. I'll be very brief, the plan is in your packet. The town of Kittleville Hills, as you know, is part of the National Flood Insurance Program. In addition to the, that's also acronymed NFIP, we also participate in the community rating system. The community rating program provides insurance discounts for all town policy homeowners based on education and outreach programs implemented by the town. We are currently a Class 6 community, which means all of our citizens with flood insurance get a 20% discount. Preferred rate gets 15% discount. Part of our CRS rating is outreach and public information. They changed the criteria and this year, we've done a public information plan. Two of our PPI committee members are actually in the audience, Skip Jones and Willow Kelly. This was a comprehensive plan in an effort to transmit, to design and transmit a message to the community that is most educational and beneficial regarding flood safety, flood insurance, storm protection, and protection of the floods, flood plane natural function. The PPI committee was comprised of public and private sector. We wanted it to be diverse and we also got more CRS credits if you diversified your group. We had insurance agents, builders, engineers, surveyors, lenders, realtors, and citizens living in the flood plain. Brandy was also on the committee, she served as a commissioner on the committee, but also as an older adult service community leader to help with getting that information out. The town already conducts outreach programs and receives our CRS credits for that, but by consolidating those efforts into this comprehensive plan, we'll receive 40% more credit for that same project. We have 26 outreach projects listed in the plan and two flood response programs that would be implemented at the time after a storm event happened. The mayor received one of them with our public information packet in the event of storms coming, I emailed that to you, and that is part of this plan that the committee was able to develop. With that, I'll answer any technical questions you have about the plan and I would ask that you adopt the plan.
Okay, thank you Meredith. Questions about the plan? Meredith, I would just like to thank you personally for all the work that you've done on this. If you don't know, Meredith is a tremendous steward for this program and, and an advocate for the CRS, the rating system, and saves all of us. If you live in KDH and pay flood tax, you can thank Meredith for helping save money on our flood tax, flood insurance. So, thank you so much for the great work that you do for this valuable program for all of us.
Thanks Meredith.
Yeah, thanks.
Meredith, you may, I'm sorry, one more, I do have a question related to the 20% discount. Do you recall the other, either municipalities or county and what their discounts are? Because I'm trying to give you another kudo, but I believe not everybody is where we are, is that correct?
No, we're, we're, right now, we're the lowest class. Does Nagseth have a six? Nagseth and Kittleville Hills have six and the rest of our, Ducks just entering CRS, so they are officially an eight, but they can do better, they just have to be.
Low being a positive thing, so.
Yes, the lower the better. The lower the number, the better. There's only one Class 1 in the United States and their flood zone is, I think, something like 20 square feet. So, that they, they get to have all the regulations that say you can't build in the flood plain and you can't do all this and, you know, it's, there's, so, there's one that's a Class 1 and I think they get 50% off their flood insurance. Don't think there's many people that have that flood insurance, because you can't build in the flood plain. It's in the middle of the country. But we do very well for a coastal community and our CRS coordinator also compliments our community on their outreach. Outreach is, when they redid the plan, the, the big book that we work by to get our CRS credits, they put majority of the points into outreach and public information and that's why we did the public program for public information, so we can get all of, in one plan and then execute the plan, so.
That's great, thank you again. Questions?
I just want to say thank you to Meredith and to everybody who's served on this committee because I actually learned a lot sitting on this committee, so thank you for asking me as well.
Okay, if no questions or comments, a motion would be in order.
I will make a motion that we adopt the 2015 Flood Plane and Storm Water Management Program for Public Information as presented.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion in a second, any discussion? All those in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, thank you. Okay, the second item under new business is the Disc Golf Course Project. First under item 2A is the Estimated Budget and Revenues. Town Manager Diaz, would you introduce this course?
Yes ma'am, thank you. Yes, this, these numbers actually we've received from the facility organizers. They've estimated the construction costs for the course at approximately $46,500 and then we've, the staff has recommended a 10% contingency to bring it to 51,150. Contributions and sponsorship revenues are estimated by the facility coordinators at approximately $68,000. The sponsorships will, will be received by the town and held for a period of six months, that's till April 30th, 2016, or until the time that the estimated procedures, expenditures is received. In the event that the, the monies are not received, then we will come back to the board for, for your guidance. Also, when, when the funding is completed, we will return to the board with a budget amendment to record the revenues for the project and the construction can begin. Listed here on, on the memo shows the amounts that they are projecting for the sponsorships and then after the three years, the overall project can be evaluated and recommended, recommendations made. That will have to do with the amount of time that each of these sponsorships would be good for, would be the three years. And then the second part of this would be the naming rights and sponsorship agreements, which have been developed by our town attorney for the Disc Golf. The, the sponsorships are for the individual items listed there below the naming rights and of course, the naming rights would be for the family that has offered the $15,000 contribution to the town.
Okay, thank you. Questions? I, I had one item I wanted to, to bring up after reviewing this. Overall, I mean, I think the estimated budget and revenue makes sense to me, the contingency certainly makes sense, appreciate you all adding that in there. But under the, the naming rights and reviewing the agreement, I know we needed to add language that if for some reason, the Disc Golf course is no longer the Disc Golf course, that the family that named the, the course, the fif, for the $15,000 contribution, we needed that and that's addressed on page two of four, item number three, this is under the naming rights sponsorship agreement. But I was not under the impression that that also was just a three-year. I was under the impression that as long as we had a Disc Golf course, that name would stay with that, but if we never, if, if for some reason, the town no longer had a Disc Golf course or the, whatever, that obviously, we needed to make sure the family knew that that was a potential. I personally feel like with making that large of a contribution, that it, to me, seems appropriate that they do get that naming right in perpetuity, as long as there's a Disc Golf course in the town of Kittleville Hills.
So, it would just, it would be the, the naming right would be in perpetuity, but not necessarily the location.
Right, or, and also in case, in case for some reason, there was, you know, I don't know, 10 years down the road, nobody was playing Disc Golf anymore and, and there wasn't even a Disc Golf course, that that, obviously, that naming right would not be there anymore because we wouldn't have a course. But as long as we have a course, regardless of where it's located, in case it was moved to a different place on the site, that that name of the course would go with it. That was my thought.
That's what I, I thought we had talked about that as well. And then when it goes away completely, that's covered in section three on that, so.
Okay, but the other, all of the other sponsorships, where everything else listed below naming rights would be for that three-year period and that also provides reoccurring revenue to help support, you know, ongoing maintenance or care for the golf course or if we needed to replace items down the road or add more creative, whatever, whatever's collected in excess, I guess, can be held so we could do improvements to the site moving forward.
Right.
That, that money would be designated for that purpose, right?
Yes. And, and that will come back to you and, and the budgets are collected.
Yeah, the original intent was for the name to stay with the course.
Right.
Yeah, I believe, because I remember talking to Steve and asking about that and invited, if, if the course isn't there anymore, are we required to do anything with the money other than, but he said, no, it's, the, should be the understanding of anyone that contributes or sponsors anything, that if something were to happen, whatever, it's not like a refundable item, so.
Other than that, Steve, I appreciate all the work on these agreements because I think they, they look good, they're clear even to someone that's not an attorney, which I think is always great when you can have an agreement that's like that.
We can fix that.
That one, item number three.
The only, only question I had, I mean, I, I think this is great, if, well, I guess a two-part question, if we get money, all the money together prior to April, could we start earlier? Okay, but otherwise, that'll be kind of a deadline just for a review.
Yes, sir.
All right, I'm good. Thank you.
And I know Darryl and a couple other committee members have been going out and verbally discussing sponsorships, but we were waiting to try to get the ducks in a row before going out there too far and it seems like there's a really strong level of support and interest from some of our local businesses.
We'll finalize these tomorrow and have them available for the committee.
Okay, that's great. I'm sure I was going to get that question later, so thank you.
I'm sure you are.
So, that's wonderful.
Yeah, Darryl told me the other day, we were talking about it and he said that he's got quite a few verbal commitments for sponsorships for like the tees or the baskets, especially the lower price ones, of course.
So, the, so the motion, we just need to approve the agreements with the changes made as outlined.
To section three?
Yes ma'am.
Okay, so, is everybody clear? If we're ready to move forward, a motion to approve the sponsorship agreements or the sponsorship fees and naming rights and sponsorship agreements with the change to item number three under the naming rights sponsorship would cover it all.
Yes.
I'll make that motion. I'll make a motion that the Board of Commissioners approve the concept of this project as presented, with the exception of the changes discussed here in section, or is it number three?
Yes.
On page two.
Of the naming rights agreement.
Of the naming rights agreement, yes, thank you.
I'll second.
There's a motion in a second, further discussion?
I'm just going to say, and I've talked about this before, I don't see anybody that I've talked to and asked to be here to explain their position, that my vote, my negative vote is going to be because I have said that I would do this. Again, it's, it's not my personal views, it's that I have been told by many constituents that, that they just don't think this is the best use of this property. Sorry.
So noted.
It's okay.
Okay, any other discussion? Okay, there's a motion in a second, all those in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Okay, thank you. Well, thank you Debbie, Steve, for your work on this and we'll keep moving forward. Okay, next, we are at Commissioner's Agenda. Commissioner Minchin?
Nothing today.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Appleby?
Nothing today.
Okay, Commissioner Reubald?
I was going to bring you up to date a little bit on the, you might have read a little bit about the RPO and the ferry situation. All I can probably tell you at this point is the fact that Greg and I sit on an RPO, a rural, rural planning organization committee that meets, it's a regional committee and if you've read anything about the ferries and the tolling, et cetera, it's been in the newspaper, et cetera. The state kind of put back on the regional committee as to whether or not we would be tolling and what we decided at that meeting was to put it off and decide to let the legislature decide if they could make a decision to fund the ferries at their next, next session. So, right now, there's, there's not a decision being made. We kind of actually did a lot of discussion, I can be honest with you, that's about the longest meeting I've ever been in. Greg picked a good time to be hunting and it, for, for a long, long discussion and going back and forth, we, we kind of decided it wasn't really fair to put it back on us and, and say, this is what we need to decide, it needs to be done at a state. It needs to be done at a state level. Years ago, there were different pots of funding for the different divisions, whether it be the highway division or the ferry division or the bridge division. And now it kind of all comes out of the same funding source, and it's not really fair, especially when you consider each ferry costs millions and millions of dollars to fund. So, what's happening at this point is we're kind of at an impasse. So, that's where that stands. But you do have representation there, even though we don't actually have ferries here in Killable Hills. It does affect you at some point. So, you do have representation on that.
Thank you. Mayor Proton?
I'd like to congratulate the mayor and Brandy for their recent prevailing in the election. And I'd personally like to thank everybody that supported me, starting with my wife and family and several or more than several people that are sitting here tonight. And I'm really happy to serve four more years, and I just want to thank you all.
Thank you. And congratulations to you as well.
Thank you.
Anything else this evening?
No, that's all.
Okay. Then we'll move on to Mayor's Agenda. I have several items, if you'll bear with me this evening. The first, I would like to say congratulations to Alfred Burton, who has been permitted to our water plant supervisor. So, if you see Alfred, please give him a pat on the back. The second item I have is just to certainly draw attention. If you're not, if you haven't looked ahead on your calendar, Wednesday is Veterans Day, a day that, I know for, the schools are out, the county offices are closed, the KDH offices are closed. So, certainly a day to remember our veterans and the service that they have made to our great country. There will be a Veterans Day observance here at the memorial at twelve-thirty. This is by, being hosted by the American Legion Post Twenty-Six, so it's gonna be at our veterans monument. Anyone is welcome, the public's welcome, so mark your calendar for that. There's also, in this flyer, I think it's on our Facebook page, but it was sent out today to our email distribution list. And if you're not on the distribution list, please see Mary at some point, or Rebecca, who's over there, to get added to the list. But there's a Family Traditions of Service and Historical Tribute to Veterans. It's free and open to the public on November twelfth at seven P.M. The location is the Dare County Arts Council, that's in Manio at three hundred Queen Elizabeth Avenue. The Outer Banks History Center is going to highlight the tradition of valiant service of men and women of Outer Banks families, and specifically looking at, this is a tribute to our veterans. So, just wanted to draw your attention to those items. Couple of other things. I mentioned at the forum, and then again tonight, meeting with a couple of folks that are planning the May Mobility Month activities. And one of the things that they brought up, and actually Dave Elder sat in on that meeting with me because I knew they were going to talk a little bit about accessibility to the beach. What these representatives, and they want to form some partnerships with broader stakeholders, they have a vision of creating a model handicap accessible beach access beyond what we currently have in the town. So, not just being able to come up a ramp and be at the top of the beach, or be at the top of the ramp and see the ocean, but actually go down on the beach, so some other type of ramp or walk over, roll over, and then actually even maybe some type of staging area where they could be on the beach and enjoy the beach. Certainly, it has to be removable because of, you know, the nature and the climate and the storms and whatnot. But in this meeting with Dave and I, they were sharing their vision, and I thought it's something that may be really neat for us to get behind. I think their grand vision is if we could create some type of model access at one of our accesses, which it wouldn't close the access off, anyone could use it. But you think of, you know, children with cerebral palsy and veterans that may be handicap accessible and are only in wheelchairs. And I think their vision was if we could have one of these model accesses in KDH promote it, get it funded, I mean, they think there's resources out there to fund this, that possibly other, either other beach, you know, some of our neighbors may take part in this. So, I kind of wanted to bring this to this group to see if there's consensus to support myself and Dave Elder in continuing conversations with these individuals as well as other stakeholders. I think the plans would be to try to, which Dave was willing to look at as well as they were, look at some of the model practices that are out there. You know, he already knew of several different things. I mean, you know, down at Jeanette's Pier, they've got that area or the matting that you can roll out on. But it would be beyond that, just not just the matting. But if there's board consensus to continue working and kind of come up with maybe a concept or a plan and then bring it back. And, but I just wanted to see if that's something we would be, like to maybe be that model pioneer to work with, with this group.
I think it's a good idea.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Yep, I think it's good.
Wonderful. Well, I will charge ahead and then keep you updated as we have meetings. And again, it was nice, Dave was willing to kind of help. And he's got the background and can do some research too with, from the ocean rescue perspective. And, you know, we don't want to do anything that's gonna end up becoming a hazard or a liability. So, and he, I know, is going to, if he hasn't already, reach out to the planning department because certainly there's all regulations and CAMA and stuff. So, we will factor in, there's lots of stakeholders that would need to be involved in these discussions. There's no timeline, this is, take your time, look at this thoroughly, investigate it. But at the end of the day, it may be something that we can do here and be really proud of doing. Let's see, two other things. The next thing is, you know, we had put on the public forum to talk about, perhaps, discussions about density, revisiting density for hotel motels, and specifically looking at redevelopment and development of hotel motels. I think one of the special things, one, because there's many, but one of the special things about Killable Hills is our diversification of lodging accommodations. You know, we do have hotels, we do have the large homes if you want to, you know, come with multiple families. We do still have the beach boxes in between the highways that, you know, you can enjoy with a smaller family. And I do think hotels, motels plays a very special, special place in that. The board, when we were looking at the FAR and how that affected multifamily dwellings, there was consensus among all of us that, of the value of hotels and motels. But we didn't know exactly where to go with that, but we said that we would be willing to look at it in the future. I have had some follow-up conversations with some of our hoteliers afterwards. And I think what I was going to suggest tonight is, would we be willing to host a morning workshop at some point, you know, maybe January, something like that, where we send an invitation to, of course, it would be an open meeting, so anyone would come, but we would specifically invite our hotel and owners, property managers, whatnot, meet with us to talk about, kind of, again, like we did with the single-family dwellings, and starting that exploratory conversation, you know. If we were to do this, what are the implications? But are there concessions that can be made? You know, can we draft something of compromise where, yeah, maybe we could look at, don't shoot me, but could look, even at a height increase if they were going to give an easement allowing a new beach access? I'm just throwing that out there, doesn't mean that's where we're going. But I just think, or, or whether it's setbacks or whatnot, I know. And again, there's gonna be the, you know, because I don't know all of planning and what we can do and what we can't do, but I certainly can ask, and you guys can tell me if it's legal or not legal. But, you know, just can, just like we put in an ordinance years ago for the chickens. And I know that you're probably going, how is she gonna draw a connection between chickens and hotels? But I'll tell you. When we were doing this, when we were exploring this with chickens, and it took many, many months, we had a faction of the population that did not want chicks, chickens or hens. But we had some that were very passionate about that. And we crafted an ordinance that had a lot of, a lot of parameters, and we ended up putting in a limit, I think it was twenty, that we were not gonna issue more than twenty permits for allowing hens over a given period. So, we could see, are we creating an issue or are we not? And my thought was even when we look at this hotel motel thing, I know you can't do spot zoning, but can you even allow a certain number of
Permits.
Permits to do certain things? So, I guess my point is, I would love to have this exploratory conversation where, you know, we have their ideas, we look at it from the seats that we need to look at it, whereas protecting the uniqueness of our area, but also keeping that diversification of accommodations. So, bringing that to you guys to see if you'd be willing to schedule this type of workshop?
Absolutely.
Yeah, that sounds good.
You had to bring up chickens, right?
I'm so sorry, I use that for a lot of reasons. And I do that because I think we came a long way in trying to balance the concerns that people have with making something that works, so.
Yeah, I'm teasing.
And I'm just defending. So, okay. I don't know if anyone has their calendar. Do you guys have your calendars tonight?
Maybe.
It has to be on the phone or it doesn't exist.
Okay. I figured January because we need to be able to give notice to, you know, invitations, but also give us time. So, you guys want to look into January? Okay. Whoops. Let's see. Let's go into, let's jump ahead into the second week. Now, we have our
Which is the second week?
Starts with, your board meeting's on Monday, January the eleventh.
I don't know if there's a day of the week that's better than others, but, you know, I'm thinking like a eight or eight Thursday, or eight or eight thirty A.M. on a Thursday or Friday.
Yeah, that sounds
Thursday, I have a library board meeting.
Then that wouldn't work.
In Hatteras, I think.
What about?
The eighth? Is that what you're talking about?
The eighth won't work for me. What about the fifteenth?
That's fine for me.
Fifteenth works for me.
Fifteen?
Yeah.
Wonderful.
What time?
Eight or eight thirty. Not until, no, it's not, but that would be eleven thirty.
Eight thirty? Is that what she said?
Eight thirty?
Is that what she said?
Eight or eight thirty? Eight thirty. See the nods? If I don't like eight A.M. meetings, okay, eight thirty, that works.
Michael doesn't like it.
Okay. Great, thank you. I think that's wonderful.
Got to get the coffee going.
That's right. Give it some time to get the coffee going. Okay. And the last thing, just to echo some of your comments, but I want to thank those of you who supported my campaign and my reelection. I am incredibly proud and humbled to be serving KDH again for the next two years. I certainly could not have done this, and I couldn't continue to do the job that I do for the town without the support of my husband and my family. So, I thank them, and I thank you all, because I am so excited to have the opportunity to serve with the two of you and the two of you again for the next two years. So, we are a good board. We've demonstrated that while we don't always agree on every vote, we know how to be respectful and civil and appreciate the contributions that each of us makes. And I think that makes for a really healthy board and a good thing for our town, so.
Absolutely.
I agree.
Thank you. And with that, we will move on then to the town manager's agenda.
Nothing this evening, ma'am.
Town attorney's agenda?
Nothing for you, so you think?
The consent agenda?
Yes, ma'am. Let's see, four items on the consent agenda. The first is the October twelfth and October twenty-eighth, twenty fifteen minutes. Second is to schedule public hearings for the local historical designations from Monday, December the fourteenth at five thirty P.M., twenty nineteen Virginia Dare Trail and two oh one Random Street. Number three is to record the memorandum of agreement between Dare County and Killable Hills for emergency coordination. And number four is to record the board's authorization to co-sponsor the North Carolina Beach Inlet and One-Ways Association Annual Conference Luncheon. The staff would recommend approval of the consent agenda as presented, and a motion would be in order.
Thank you, Debbie. Questions, discussion? Motion?
I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda.
Second?
Any discussion? All those in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And we are now at the second time set aside this evening for public comment. Is there anyone that wishes to speak at this public comment time? Anyone? Really?
Colleen, did you fall asleep after?
We have Colleen, you should be happy. Look at all these new faces in the audience. That's wonderful. Thank you all that are here with us this evening.
Yes, thank you.
Anything else before we adjourn? If not, a motion would be in order.
So moved.
Second.
Any other comments? All those in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you for being here this evening.
Thank you, everybody.
Hello, my name's Greg Loy. And today I'll introduce to you Brian Brightbill and Meredith Guns, who are certified floodplain managers for the town of Killable Hills. Meredith and Brian will be providing information on construction requirements in the special flood hazard areas, storm preparation and emergency response, national flood insurance construction standards, property protection, and improvements that can mitigate the effects of storm damage and flooding, all of which can help you prepare for and respond to potential flood events in Killable Hills. In Killable Hills, regulations for developing within the special flood hazard area are found in the Flood Damage Prevention Ordinance, chapter one fifty-two of the town code. These regulations can be accessed online at KDHNc.com. Construction regulations require new construction to be built at least one foot above base flood elevation. However, some enclosures can be built below base flood elevation, including storage areas, parking areas, or dry entry. These three types of enclosures must be constructed with flood-resistant materials, and flood vents are required. Flood venting requirements and information on flood-resistant materials can be found at the planning department. All development within a special flood hazard area requires a flood development permit, and it is issued along with a building permit. Elevation certificates are required three times during a new construction process. These certificates ensure that new construction is proposed and constructed above the base flood elevation. The first is a construction drawings elevation certificate, which is submitted with the application for a building permit. The second is a building under construction elevation certificate, which is required within twenty-one days of construction of the first elevated floor. The third is a fitness construction elevation certificate, which is required at completion of the project and must be submitted and approved in order for a certificate of occupancy to be issued. Additionally, Killable Hills keeps elevation certificates on file. Come by or call to get a copy before you plan your next construction project or before you purchase your property. There are multiple publications by the Federal Emergency Management Agency to assist homeowners and contractors with building in coastal areas to minimize loss. These publications are available at the Killable Hills Planning Department or can be accessed online. There are also regulations that apply within specific flood zones. In the VE flood zone, the flood damage prevention ordinance requires one foot free of obstruction below the first elevated floor. This area can also be enclosed with lattice or screening, which will allow overwash to move freely under the house and minimize damage to the structure. A V-zone certificate will be required in addition to the elevation certificate. A V-zone certificate is completed by a North Carolina design professional and will certify the development meets the minimum standards of the VE zone. Within the AE zones, fill material may be used to elevate a lot to meet base flood requirements. Structural fill materials may not be used within VE zones, and one foot free of obstruction applies even if the lot is above base flood elevation.
Some structures within the special flood hazard area are considered non-conforming, which means they don't conform to the current flood damage prevention ordinance. There are many non-conforming structures in Killable Hills. There's a couple reasons, but the most common were flood map changes that place an existing structure within a different flood zone with a different base flood elevation. Or an existing structure may have been built prior to Killable Hills entering the National Flood Insurance Program. If you need to know whether your house is non-conforming, come by the planning department and we will help you. If you own a non-conforming structure, because of flood regulations, you can still make improvements or repairs or repair damage to the structure provided the project does not exceed fifty percent of the value of the structure. If a project is over fifty percent of the value of the structure, it's considered substantial damage or substantial improvement. If the damage or improvement exceed the fifty percent of the value, the structure is required to be brought into compliance with all regulations of the flood damage prevention ordinance. Fortunately, there are several federal programs that homeowners can use to help homes meet compliance standards, such as increased cost of compliance coverage under the compliance standards, such as increased cost of compliance coverage under the standard flood insurance policy. ICC coverage provides payments up to $30,000 to meet current state and federal floodplain management ordinances. ICC coverage can help with the cost of elevating or floodproofing, demolishing or relocation of a non-conforming structure. You can get additional information at the Planning Department or online at www.fema.gov. We also have multiple publications at the Planning Department to help you with retrofitting your structure, to help protect your property from future flood damage. A big part of preparation is education. Please teach all your family members, including children, about flood safety and hurricane preparedness. The Killable Hills Planning Department is here to help. Stop by or call to receive information about flood zones, and check and see if we have an elevation certificate for your property on file. Fact sheets, brochures, and publications from FEMA are available, and will further teach you about flood hazards and the opportunities you may have available to minimize your risk. This is especially important if you're considering building or buying in a flood zone.
The Killable Hills Planning Department would like to provide information to increase your understanding of flood mitigation and protection by talking about the National Flood Insurance Program, the Community Rating System, mapping and flood zones, and storm preparation and emergency response, all of which can help you prepare for and respond to potential flood events in Killable Hills. Flooding can occur with different types of weather events, including tropical storms, hurricanes, nor'easters, and torrential rains that cause groundwater elevation. That means that during significant rain events or torrential downpours, the water table may rise above the ground level and cause flooding to structures with ground level enclosures. In 2003, during Hurricane Isabel, in 2012, during Hurricane Sandy, Killable Hills experienced significant ocean overwash. Also, in 2011, during Hurricane Irene, Killable Hills experienced significant soundside flooding, both east and west of a drive. Near ocean or sound, or not, your property may be susceptible to flooding. The security of knowing that your property is insured against flood damage, either as required or by choice, can help you cope with otherwise devastating conditions.
The National Flood Insurance Program is administered through the Federal Emergency Management Act, or FEMA, a division of the Homeland Security, and enforced locally. Killable Hills has participated in the National Flood Insurance Program since 1972, and our commitment enables homeowners, business owners, and renters who may want to protect their personal property in Killable Hills to obtain affordable federally backed flood insurance. We preserve this privilege by adopting and enforcing ordinances that meet and exceed federal requirements to reduce the risk of flooding and provide protection from flooding. Also, because Killable Hills' commitment to our flood standards, we are eligible for federal assistance in the event of a disaster, which helps with our recovery for both our citizens and our town. Standard homeowners' insurance will not cover flooding. There are different types of flood insurance. There's flood insurance even for renters. There's also flood insurance even if you're not located in a special flood hazard area. Please see your flood insurance agent and ask about your options. We encourage everybody in and out of the flood zones to get flood insurance. In order to make flood insurance more affordable for our citizens, the town participates in the Community Rating System, a part of the National Flood Insurance Program. This is a voluntary program that allows communities to earn credit points to determine the community rating classification. Killable Hills has taken active steps to reduce flood risks through public outreach activities, education, mapping, and development regulations. Because of this, we're a Class 6 rated community. That means our property owners receive a 20% discount on flood insurance policies. In the future, we plan to take additional steps to maintain our Class 6 rating, and to strive to increase our community's credit points for the benefit of our property owners.
A large portion of Killable Hills is located within a special flood hazard area. Special flood hazard areas are low-lying areas that are susceptible to flooding. As a property owner or renter, you can use this map to get a reliable indication of what flood zone you're in. 2006 is the most recent firm for the town of Killable Hills. However, updated maps are expected soon. Most property within the United States is assigned to a flood zone based on flood risk, low, moderate, or high. In Killable Hills, property is located in either a varying division of the VE or AE zones, or in the X-zone. Properties located within AE or VE zones are identified as a special flood hazard area, and have a 1% annual chance of flooding. However, VE zone properties are subject to the additional hazard of storm-induced wave action. Properties located outside the special flood hazard area are in the X-zone, and are not subject to flood regulation or required to have flood insurance. However, low-cost preferred risk policies are available and recommended for properties located within the X-zone. Flood insurance for renters to protect their personal belongings is available and recommended. Implementation of flood coverage requires a 30-day waiting period from the date of application. Firm assistance is available at the Planning Department at Killable Hills Town Hall, and you can also check firms at the interactive NCfloodmaps.com. Your insurance agent or insurance company is another source for current firm information.
It is important that private property owners participate in the protection of our natural floodplains. In Killable Hills, we have a series of constructed drainage systems to move floodwaters away from properties and infrastructures as quickly as possible. If these drainage and floodways are blocked with trash or debris, they no longer function as designed. Please do not fill ditches and drainage swales with materials that will alter the flow of stormwater. Such materials include grass clippings, leaves, branches, limbs, and trash. Also, please remember that our drainage ditches empty into the ocean and the sound. Don't use them for any sort of chemical disposal, which could be dangerous to the aquatic and human life.
Storm and emergency preparedness are keys to protection. Before the storm season, make sure both your homeowner's policy and your flood insurance policies are in place and up to date. Develop a plan that includes answers to the questions, "How will I obtain all necessary information, and how will I protect my family and my property?" Here are some tips. Inventory and photograph your home's contents, and put important papers and insurance policies in a safe place. Review your insurance policies and coverage. Contact your insurance carrier. Develop an emergency plan that includes evacuation routes. Inform family members about destinations. Local governments will issue advisories, warnings, and possibly evacuation orders. Follow instructions and their advice. If you are advised to evacuate, do so promptly. Monitor emergency communications on darenc.com, or darecountyem.com, and KDHC.com. If there is time, turn off all utilities, raise objects that may be subject to flooding, fill bathtubs with fresh water, and board up windows and doors to protect from flying debris. Never drive into a flooded roadway. The road may be washed out, or another dangerous situation. Do not enter a flooded building until it has been determined safe to do so. You may contact the building inspector with questions. Contact the Planning Department for permit information. While making repairs mitigate against future flood damage. Protect yourself and your family as much as possible through proper planning for floods and disaster. The Killable Hills Planning and Inspections Department is here to assist everyone to better understand and manage flood risk to our community. Please visit our office at 102 Town Hall Drive, off Collington Road, or call us to find out how we can help.